Hello, everyone. Mariana and I, when we get two hosts together, we don't know who's gonna lead and who's gonna follow. So that's why we were just sitting there, not sure which one was gonna speak first. But we'll probably both be kind of hosting this episode anyway of the watchdog report here. This is gonna be about the 11:20 school board meeting that just happened yesterday. We're shooting this, it's Friday, the 21st, so you're likely seeing it on Saturday, unless it's late Friday night. But the meeting just happened, it was the last meeting for two school board members. And it was full of its share, surprisingly, as full of fireworks as it was, there really wasn't a whole lot discussed in terms of the school and stuff. There wasn't really much done, you know, with that, but there was still a lot going on in the meeting, a lot of fireworks. What do you think, Mariana?
That is correct. Honestly, it is what I was expecting that was gonna happen, Jonathan. I was expecting for the libtard to come out in numbers, which they did. And that's because they did put an announcement out there since Abigail Turney was retiring to come and, you know, sing the praises to her name. Alright, so they came out to basically sing the praises to her name. But in doing so, it was disgusting, okay, to see the lack of respect, okay, from these people towards Kelly Brent. Now, I said from the very beginning that this is supposed to be the people of tolerance, the people of kindness and all this other, you know, bull crap that you guys already know, I don't have to repeat it. But they are the rudest, unkindness, vicious people you'll ever come across, okay? I've been saying for the longest that this has all been about them bringing in their politics and their agendas. But what's typical of the left is that they will gaslight the community to make people believe like they did with the Terry Mickle campaign. Because, you know, a lot of people go, oh, well, Terry won. Well, my question to them is, is she? Is this a victory or is this a theft? Because, and the reason I say that is because she ran a campaign of lies. And unfortunately, when the people who fell for her lies opened their eyes, they're gonna really see that, number one, she's not a conservative. She was never Republican, although she tried to, you know, pass herself as one. She have been endorsed by left-wing lunatic organizations, like I've said before. So it's gonna be very eye-opening, very eye-opening. But the lack of respect, getting back to the meeting yesterday, was I expecting that? I was, I was, because even the way they were addressing Mrs. Brent was disrespectful to the nines, okay, to the nines. And I think you saw that yourself if you were following the meeting.
Yeah, that's what we're gonna start doing now. We're not gonna do the live watch-alongs at the meetings, we're just gonna, because many people just tune into the website anyway. So we're just gonna let people tune in. If you wanna watch the meetings, go to the West Shore School District website, you could watch the meetings. And then we're gonna do an after show like this, whether we do it right after the meeting or we do it a day or two after. That's what we're gonna start doing now. Because for one, it's easier for us logistically. And number two, you know, like I said, they air it on their website anyway. So my main concern, the reason I started doing it, was that they would take things out of the meeting or start removing school board meetings from the website. So that was my main concern. But if they haven't done that over the last 12 months, I don't see them starting to do it now. And if they do start, then we will resume what we were doing before. And again, it was the parents' comments. Surprisingly, I do wanna say real quick, though, that there was, what, a couple of student comments on this one. They weren't about the social issues, dealing with the school district and stuff. But they did have a number of school speakers, student speakers, last night. And I want to, again, just bring up to you real quick before we start getting into the meat of it. I don't have a problem with student speakers. I think it's great, I think it's great for the students to be able to talk to the school board, to be able to talk about themselves and their journey. I think all of that is great. Do you think, in terms of positioning in the meeting, is that something that should really be before the meat of the meeting? Like, shouldn't be the agenda, shouldn't the agenda items be what's talked about first and then get to the comments after?
Because... I agree with you, I agree with you. Put it in perspective, and this is what I mean. They started doing what I call the rah-rah section after the parents started coming to the meetings. And the parents started, you know, creating the old YouTube channel that we had that went down. And we started with the boiling point, when we started really telling the people, now, this was about the time that I was running, what was really happening behind the doors of the West Shore School District. So they incorporated the rah-rah section, okay, to try to make the people see, oh, look how great we're doing. Now, I have nothing against the children that they are exceeding, okay? And the children that are, you know, reaching their goals, and yes, they should be applauded. But I've always said that should either be done in a separate meeting during the week or a little bit towards the end. But then again, keeping in mind that some of these kids have to go to school in the following day. You know, yeah, you know, you wanna get them in so they have the option to go home, you know, and get their rest for the following school night. School night, they should either do it on a Friday or on a Saturday, but neither here nor there. It was incorporated for them to try to say, oh, look how wonderful we are. And try to get the attention off to what's really happening.
Yeah, and well, credit to the students, they rarely address the social issues and stuff that's going on in the school. I think they should do that more, but then again, I think you'd get parents manipulating their kids to come in. You know, so I think it's best to let the kids say what they wanna say. And often, it's not even about some of the issues at the West Shore School District. And I think that just goes to show that the kids, at least some of the kids that we get to see, you know, they are focused on learning and stuff. And if only the school board and some of the administration would follow suits, then the West Shore School District probably wouldn't have the kind of issues that it currently has. So there's a lot of clips, we have a couple of clips here from last night's meeting here. Which one do you wanna start with, or did you wanna talk about something else before we get to the clips?
Let's do the clips a little later.
Alright. I sold off on the clip.
Okay, and the reason for that, I think that there's some things that we need to discuss before we get to the clips.
Alright.
And I'm gonna be, I'm gonna be very clear. So we lost the school board majority, okay? And like I stated, it was a theft, it was not a victory, because this campaign was based on lies, okay? Now, Region One, we knew we were gonna lose that, because nobody would step up to Region One, because Region One is a hot mess, that's the region that I'm in, okay? However, we are already starting to see, not only hear the rumbles, but see the changes that are already happening and they haven't swung these people in yet. So let's talk, okay? First, we saw that Mrs. Thomas resigned, okay? Now, they put in her replacement, John Dormuth. Now, John Dormuth is a flaming liberal, okay? He is against everything that the conservative parent want for, not only their child, but want to implement for the protection of all children, okay? So if you guys think that you have an ally with him, you do not. I'm gonna tell you that right now. He was approached, to my understanding, in reference to the Library Resource Policy 109, in which he is deadly against it. Now, this policy has been tabled, and in school board lingo, anybody who's worked in the education field like I have, in that lingo, that basically means that that's gonna be tabled until we get another conservative board. So that can be tabled for years, because they are not looking to push that policy forward at all.
They're doing the opposite, they wanna undo everything that the conservative board has done over the last two years.
Oh, they're gonna undo it.
And they're gonna do it in one meeting.
Yeah, they're gonna undo it, so people get ready, okay? Always keep in mind, you know, that elections have consequences, okay? And if you didn't get out there, you know, to vote for whatever your reason was, okay? Election has consequences and you enabled this to happen, alright? So that being stated, we found out last night, and we've been confirming throughout the day, that the administration has started an anonymous confidential committee. And they will not even tell the school board members, that they will not tell the school board directors, their bosses, who is in this committee. And what this committee will do is that they will pass and vote to pass library books without your consent, without your knowledge, without your knowledge who they are, into the school. So Kristy read the book, All Boys Are in Blue, last night, and it's disgusting. She read, it was disgusting. What we didn't know, if you, and when you play the clip, you will see it. While she's speaking, and she's speaking about that book, All Boys Are in Blue, Abigail Turney says, oh, was there a challenge on this book? Okay, and I found that a little bit odd, okay? Why would she ask that? Okay, well, the reason she asked is because that same night, yesterday, before this meeting, this little confidential committee passed for that book to be in all our libraries here in the West Shore School District. Now, about the challenge. I challenged that book, I challenged The Breakup List. I challenged Me, Earl, and the Dying Girl, which is the other disgusting book that Kristy read in the first time that she did this, on August 14, 16, and 17. I submitted it, okay? And Matthew Gay emailed me back, that they received it and that they were gonna review it. This was in August, we're practically almost in December. It crickets, okay, they did no follow-up. They must have taken it and tossed it in the trash, okay? They are saying and lying that none of these books were challenged when they were. So now they pass a book, approve a book to be in our library, okay? Which is this one, that was challenged and they ignored the challenge.
Yeah.
Okay, so is having a private, a anonymous, a secretive confidential committee legal? No, it's not, I'm gonna tell you why. Because our tax money pays for those books, number one. And number two, it's something that they have to vote on? Now, it's not the board got granted, okay, but it's still through the administration. It's something that they have to vote on, we, the parents, need to have a say. Now, this little committee here, to my understanding, there is not one conservative parent on it, not one. Like, they have another group called Voices for the District, something like that, a group of parents that is full of libtards, libtard teachers, and they will not allow and they will not open the door for a conservative parent to enter these committees. So they are gonna bring in the trash, the trash is already there, they're gonna bring in more. Okay, so it's gonna really take a massive push on our side to get this removed. And even if you challenge it, and let me tell you, I don't think you've seen the challenges, the pages, it's three pages long. You have to read the book, you have to write like a book report and write what you want them to do and why and what was offensive. And all this other napola, and you know me, I'm a little extra. So I also put the PA statutes that they are violating, okay? Because it is a crime to have this material in the school, and that was ignored. So that's one piece that I want you guys to inform. Number two, they're bringing in two solicitors from two different companies. Now, there's one that's called Stumpin' Something, okay? And that is AKA Stock and Leader. Stock and Leader changed their name, so they're bringing Stock and Leader back in, guys.
Yeah. This is the solicitor before the whole Solicitor Snafu or whatever it was, when they changed solicitors. This is who it was before that, right?
Correct, they're Stock and Leader under a new name. And they were not transparent enough to tell the parents, because they're hoping that a new name is going to confuse them. They were not transparent enough to tell the parents that this is indeed Stock and Leader. And if you remember, before Stock and Leader changed their name, then we have put some information out there, and I can still find it, we haven't needed, of one of their lawyers, okay, that got in trouble for pedophilia. Okay, and Stock and Leader is all about bringing this trash into our schools. So the other solicitors that they're bringing, it has to do with the laws, I guess, surrounding the children in special ed. Now, another thing that's coming back is sports equity. Now, the daughter of one of the candidates that won, I'm not gonna say the name, because you know me, I like to respect children. But she had been running her mouth in the school, in the school that she's in, telling the children that because this particular candidate won, that they're bringing back sports equity. So we're gonna have boys now in women's sports.
Which is illegal, so we're gonna be definitely continuing our work on that front as soon as they overturn that next month in the first meeting. We know it's gonna be the first meeting, they're gonna literally have a vote and overturn every single thing in the very first meeting.
Exactly, and but the thing is this, that's a mandate that Donald Trump, you know, put in place.
An executive order.
After Abigail Turney's, you know, ask her what she said in one of the meetings, well, executive orders are not law. No, they're not law, but when there's an executive order, you must abide by it.
Yeah, or suffer the consequences, like, it's unlikely anybody's going to jail, but the West Shore is gonna lose federal funding.
Well, we're gonna make sure they do. We're gonna make sure they do, because there's different ways of contacting the DOJ. And this time, we're gonna have to really do what we need to do to make sure that they lose federal funding. Because the only thing that's gonna affect the West Shore School District, the only thing they care about, it's not your children. It's not your children, it's the Donald Trump. Exactly, and this is why I'm saying, if you're hearing this broadcast and you're looking to buy real estate and you see that the school district is West Shore School District, you're in Cumberland County, either don't buy the house, unless you like, you know, your child being indoctrinated, either don't buy the house. Or if you're gonna buy the house, be able to put your child in cyber school, homeschool, or some sort of private school. Because not only are the schools horrendous and the administration is horrendous, as you guys can see by yourselves, but they're gonna break your back in taxes. Because that's in your tax plan that Brian Geis might instill, it's gonna be instilled again, and it's gonna be forced, it's gonna be enforced. So expect that also. Okay, now, another thing to expect is the bathrooms. So the bathrooms are going to be co-ed. Understand what I just said, parents, the bathrooms will be co-ed, okay? Or genders. Now, what they're looking to do, I don't know who's the Einstein that had this plan, but they're going to, you know how when you go to the stalls, usually it's like a little space, a little opening that you can peek through? Okay, well, those are gonna be sealed, okay? Like, a new stall, they're gonna put, it's gonna be sealed from top to bottom and side to side, and that is what they call security. And then there's gonna be a common wash area that boy and girl will use. And I think we heard Janelle Conrad speak about that in the meeting yesterday. So that is their big plan, okay? Because there's no common sense in the West Shore School District, lost common sense.
They've lost, yeah, it's just, they're doing it so openly and brazenly, like, just, oh, yeah, finally, the right side, you know, right is gonna win, and it's like, do you hear yourselves? Do you see it, do you hear yourselves? I don't understand how people don't, it's, they're so, they're so in their own head, they're in their own thing that they just, they can't consider anything, that they're not always right. They think they're always right in every regard, and it's so disturbing.
It is, and expect more frivolous spending. We also, I think it was Janelle Conrad, okay? That she went through some of the things that they're spending money on, okay? Jonathan, please, explain to me, why should a squeegee cost $155?
Squeegee?
A squeegee, you know, one of those squeegee things, like, windows. So they are spending $155 on squeegees on a squeegee.
Are they spending, are they getting 155 of them?
I doubt it.
That would be the only way, that would be okay.
One squeegee is $155.
For $150.
Exactly, they're spending $800 on a toilet seat.
I can buy myself a handicap toilet for less than that, just wanna put that out there. I have to, like, I've had, I've been carrying around the same handicap toilet with me for the last 10 years, because I, you know, when I move around, I take my handicap toilet with me. And that is, even with inflation, even with, it's more expensive than what I paid for it now, but I keep my eyes on it just in case I ever gotta replace it. That's, you can get a whole handicap toilet for far less than $800, and you're spending it on a seat?
Correct, on a seat, a toilet seat, okay? They're talking about solar panels for the garages. Okay, they know how much solar panels for the garages, yeah.
I wanna point out that it took Mariana, like, five full minutes for me to understand this, that whole concept. It's for e-cars, it's for people who drive e-car, students and teachers and whatever, to drive e-cars. Because they can't afford the electric bill or anything to do that. Solar panels is actually probably would be a smart move, but if they're using it for e-cars, then I would have to say that it's stupid, because you're gonna run into a whole bunch of problems with that. It's unlikely that you're gonna, it's unlikely you generate enough with the solar panels to be able to charge. Depending on how many e-cars there are, I guess, you know? But I don't know, that seems a little bit frivolous too, especially when you're $50 million in the hole.
Exactly, so get ready for more frivolous spending on your tax dollar and still have to, you know, feed the superintendent his tacos and his $200,000 a year salary for doing absolutely nothing. Now, another concern that the parents have had is this opt-out option, okay? So we saw that they had this symposium with the children on sexting, and they call this cybersecurity. And they're claiming, oh, it's fine, because they came from the Attorney General's office. No, it's not fine, because they misled the parents, okay? And sexting is not part of cybersecurity at all. It's part of privacy, it's part of, what is it called, sexual criminology, okay? It's part of that. And why would a fourth and fifth grader need to know anything about sexting?
Yeah.
Okay, then you add on the books, okay? Now, let me tell you, let's get back to the books here for a minute. You know what I did, Jonathan? Just out of curiosity to see what would happen. Kristy gave me some pictures of the books that she's been reading, right, that are really disgusting and really graphic. Now, you know that Facebook really has no kind of standards, okay? Their standards are really like in the toilet. So I decided to post it on our pages for the parents to see it. I posted three times, and three times, Facebook removed the post of all those pictures and the stuff that was saying three times because of nudity, sexual graphic, okay? And this is Facebook. Now, Kristy's clip of speaking last night and reading the books, I had her upload it three more times today, because they kept removing it because of sexual contact. So if this is Facebook removing this, okay, why is this in our schools?
Okay, so if this episode gets taken down, what we'll have to do is, well, what I'll have to do is probably take her clip out of the broadcast and then repost it. And I might even do that twice, or no, I'm not gonna do it twice, because I don't want people to see the wrong one. If it happens, if it gets pulled down, then we'll make sure. And I'm also gonna put a full disclaimer on it when I post it as well. Hopefully, we won't get dinged for it, but yes, that is...
Go to the Rumble channel, guys, go to the Rumble channel.
Oh, yeah, exactly, yeah, yeah, the Rumble channel, yeah, exactly, yeah. The Rumble channel, always go to the Rumble channel anytime something gets removed or anything from Facebook or YouTube, exactly, yeah. So in fact, what I might do, we'll try it on Facebook still and on YouTube. But if we get dinged on it, make sure you go to watch it on Rumble, and I'm saying it now before we show the clip to make sure that people know that. Make sure you go to Rumble if you wanna see Kristy's clip, if this has been pulled down. We are gonna show it here, but if you're, you know, I may have to take it down or off of the YouTube and Facebook broadcast. So if you're watching on YouTube or Facebook and you don't see the clip from Kristy, go to Rumble, that's the only way we're likely to get it posted, actually.
Or reach out to me and I will send it to your email if I have to, okay?
Yeah, yeah, you always, yeah, reach out to the page, yeah, reach out to the page, we can always, we can always do that. And also, you know, I may even, we may even, I may even just be able to take some of the words out and stuff, like, bleep them out or something, and then that might work for us. We'll have to see how this goes, everybody, but that just goes to show what is in the schools. That's why you brought that up, is because that just goes to show what's in the schools.
Because there's something I haven't shared with you. The demographics of Pennsylvania, okay? And the West Shore School District is changing. There's people from other walks of life and cultures that have come in and moved in. Now, I say that to say, this week, I was speaking to a gentleman who happens to be a Muslim. And he looked at me, he goes, can I ask you a question? And I'm like, yes, you can. And he's like, my daughter is now going to the West Shore School District. Now, her daughter, you know, she does the heat job and all that stuff, okay? And she's coming home, telling me that the teachers are saying that there's no such thing as gender and that you can identify as a boy if you want to, you can identify as a girl, you can identify whatever you want, because there's no such thing, okay? And she's also telling me about these books, okay, now, this is his daughter, telling the dad about the books in the library that she's seen, that have a section for the LGBTQ, okay? And the behavior of some of the kids, and that he's witnessed. He's like, why isn't the school board doing anything? And he goes, then I thought America was more conservative. So I looked at him, I smiled, I said, well, welcome to America. I told him what's happening is happening worldwide. Okay, that's number one. Number two, she is accurate, your daughter's not lying to you, this is happening. And we had a conservative board that was trying to fight this, but community members and activists and advocates of different walks of life have been fighting them, silencing them to the point that they want to remove them from the school, because they're fighting for their right to keep their politic, their agenda, and their smut in our schools. So it is correct. Now, he says to me, well, I think I'm gonna have to show up to one of the board meetings one day, because I'm gonna help them understand how, in my culture, that's not acceptable. And God created man and woman. And I said, well, I mean, you're always welcome to come to the board meetings, but I will caution you about mannerisms and how you may react to certain things, okay? Because they will, some of those board members will make sure that you leave in handcuffs. Okay, so what I'm saying is, for a while now, the ladies and I, when we talk amongst each other, we've been saying, you know, this is a perfect formula for a disaster to happen. Because you never know who's the person that's gonna be so offended that, and I'm not saying that he is, you know, that's not what I'm saying, but I'm saying in general, you never know who's gonna get so offended that something may occur. If a student gets offended from a different walk of life, okay? Something may occur. So in essence, by bringing in this politics, by bringing in these books, by bringing in these agendas, they are opening up the doors to danger in many ways. How many people don't have mental health issues nowadays? You're opening up the doors to dangers, they're putting our kids in danger, okay? By bringing these things into our schools. So this is something that is hard to talk about, but we've seen it happen in other states, can very well happen here, you know? And I always pray to God that it's not a tragedy that will finally open the eyes of our community, that this evil must be stopped.
I mean, even if the tragedy happened, there's still those that would, that are going to double down on their position, you know what I mean? Like, we've seen it already in other places in the country, when tragedy has happened and, you know, they're still, they're still hunkered in their position, so. But hopefully, enough people wake up before something like that happens, because I don't want, I certainly don't wanna see something like that happen in our area or anywhere, I don't wanna see it happen anywhere.
Neither do I, I will never wanna see children hurt because of the bad decision of these people that think that they know better than the parents or these activists in our community trying to push their agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, that's, I'm concerned about that also. So I got nieces and nephews in various school districts around the area, so I don't want anything bad to be happening to them. And it's dangerous out there right now, and it's because of, it's because of some of what we're seeing, it's just, it's, and it's because they're so filled with hate. In fact, that's a good segue, do you mind if I play the John Cobb clip?
Let's go for it.
Because I think, now, I'm gonna play this clip, it's from John Cobb, he was at the school board meeting... Um, he was at the school board meeting last night, and I think what he says as, is, everything he says is accurate, first of all, it's one hundred percent accurate. Because he talks about what he witnessed in the meeting, um, and then everything he talks about after that is also one hundred percent accurate. So I am gonna be reaching out to him to try and get him on an episode, but I wanted to play this clip because it just goes to show. Uh, how the meeting was and how it unfolded like uh, before the parents' comments and during the parents' commenting. So let's uh, let's put, let's watch this.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm John Cobb, Lemoine. Um, so I had a totally upbeat, happy conversation I wanted to have with the board, but I've decided I'm not gonna do that. I observed the crowd tonight and saw how um. How most of them didn't stand up um for Ms. Brent when she was getting her award for, for her years of service here. And I find that to be sad and disgusting. The uh. You know, the, the politics of personal destruction, that was coined by uh, Bill Clinton back in ninety-four. And used again by Hillary, and that at one time was considered a negative and horrible thing. And it seems to have become a common tool by people working to drive the progressive agenda in the worst, West Shore School District. And I'm not speaking to all the school board, or, school board members, there may be a few that are a part of, of this activity. It may be others, I don't know, but those who need to hear this will hear it and know who they are. Um, because of a difference of opinion, hatred. Has replaced respect and has taken a hold of, of so many of you all. Of many of you within this room, not just the board, but everyone in this room. What sort of vile human being would work to have someone fired from their job over a difference of opinion? Progressives, that's who, progressives in this room.
They can't talk to the audience.
Okay, then I'll, I'll, I'll speak towards the board, excuse me. What sort of cretin would slander a person's character over a difference of opinion? People in this room. What sort of putrid animal would destroy someone's business? People in this room. It's disgusting, vile and, and horrible. And why? Because some people don't want their daughters to have young men disrobe and defecate in the same rooms. That's it, I mean, it's not a big deal. This board had the opportunity to stop this travesty, the so-called conservatives, but they didn't have the balls themselves to stand up as adults. The politics of personal destruction alive and well in the heart of the progressives in West Shore School District. Thank you.
That was John Cobb, that's what he had to say to the school board, and I think it was, it's, I think they needed to hear it, I think it needed to be said. And that's why I got the clip and wanted to play it on this show, and I'll likely be releasing some of these clips uh, throughout the week also. Because uh, these are all public meetings, so we can, and the local news isn't going to do it, so we're abs, we absolutely will. And everything he said is one hundred percent accurate. Like, he's not saying one lie or one fabrication in what he said.
He is spot on, I know Mr. Cobb's and he's a very respected um resident here in Cumberland County, very respected. And what, he said what needed to be said, and I applaud him, I totally applaud him and I agree with him. Because you know, what, the, the level of evil that we've seen from these people is ridiculous, and like he said. To even try to come against somebody's livelihood. I mean, that is downright evil because you can't agree, you can't agree, listen, you know, again, this is America. You have your right to say what you have to say, or, you know, live how you wanna live and you have your opinion and I will fight for your rights. You know, say what you need to say for your opinion, but you don't have the right to harm somebody else, and these people are demonic, they're evil. And you're right, um, the media will not cover it, we had Penn Lives there yesterday, okay? And um. The representative from Penn Lives, I think it was Zachary Hoops. He was um trying to follow Mrs. Brent out of the meeting, and I chased him out like a rat. I thought, you leave her alone, get away from her, but even when I, you know, uh, Casey and I escorted her to her car. Not that she minds speaking to him because she didn't, but you know, enough is enough. He still found his way around, okay? And he kept insisting, so Kelly, he's like, Mariana, let me just talk to him, I'm like, no, I go, I'm not leaving, I'm not leaving, I'm staying right here. Until I see you driving away home safe, okay? So he told me, oh, don't record me, yeah, my toe, I wasn't gonna recall him. So anyway, he was, he was polite, he was polite to her, she was polite back, and I told him to his face, I better. Not read you misrepresenting her, or you misquoting her, cause I'm gonna go after you, the boiling point's gonna go after you. So you better think twice, I mean, I just confronted him in thirty ways into Sunday. So um, that being stated, I saw what they put out today, so although he didn't quote her in any way, he did not. He still spin the lie, he still spin the lie, and he still spin the false narrative. Of the sunshine violation and these awful conservatives versus speaking the truth. I mean, his dumb behind, and I'm sorry for saying it that way, but his dumb behind was sitting in that meeting. And he saw, but he rather do this, okay? Um, when it comes to the truth, just, you know, not even look at it, not even disclose that he rather do that. Than really disclose what happened in the truth because of the bottom line, which is the dollar bill. So he will sell his soul to Satan, to whoever he has to sell it, but he will not put out the truth.
No, uh, Penn Live doesn't put out the, put out the truth, the York Dispatch, they don't put out the truth. There's, there's almost no media uh, in the area that's covering this or, or doing this. Um, we're the only ones, and even, I've seen a lot of people are on this group page, uh, the Ratchet Five Channel News. Um, and uh, it's a great idea and all, but coincidentally, and I found out why later on. But they wouldn't let me post any of my boiling point podcast stuff, share anything from the podcast on there. Uh, and I found out later, it's because of who potentially is running that page. So that they're, so that it's unlikely that my, they'll let me post any of my podcasts or anything from my podcast on there. So there's a lot of people who, who try and curb the information that you get. Uh, and you really have to be wary of it, that's why I always tell people, look at it, look into it for yourself, investigate for yourself, fact check for yourself. Because, you know, that's really the only way, or you can listen to us, and if you fact check us, then it's only gonna take you a couple of episodes to realize that we are gonna tell you the truth. Uh, even when it's stuff we don't wanna hear. That happens. Sometimes we do have to report on stuff we don't wanna hear, next month, we're gonna be doing a whole lot of that on the West Shore School District. We're gonna be reporting on a whole bunch of stuff that we're not gonna want to report on.
Now let's look at also ABC. Not even, not even two hours after the school board meeting was done, man, two, three hours, they put out a hit piece. Okay, and people were going, oh, I'm so happy that MAGA Karens are out, but ABC also put on a hit piece, but you know why? Because Danielle Gross has friends in ABC, because she works in media that are ready. And it's, it's a fantasy that ABC will help her spin her lies, her agenda and her politics. And they are like really happy to do so, but that should be a conflict of interest. Okay, because you're helping somebody that works for you and has the segment on ABC. To hurt innocent people and spin lies, and they will never speak to the conservative voice. Okay, they will help Danielle Gross spin her life, and then she has the audacity to come to the school board meeting, talk about. Oh, everybody has freedom of speech, no, she's worried because John Cobb said a couple of truths, and a lot of those truths hit her right between. High balls, because the first one for years now, okay? And that come into these meetings trying to silence the conservative parents and trying to, you know, that little blue card that we um sign, that we have to sign? That said that you can't anybody else by name, whose idea was that? That was Danielle's gross, okay? And she and Brian Geisweit and Tostos and Cam, because I have the email, they had a right to know. They came, came into cahoots to create that in order to silence the conservative voice. Because she wasn't liking what the conservative people were saying. And then she had the atmosphere to sit right behind in that chair, okay? And speak about freedom of speech and limiting people's speech.
Never, we just listened to John Cobb's clip, he, he never once said anybody couldn't speak or anything, he's saying, what kind of people does it take? To do the stuff that you're doing, that's what he's talking about, of course, you can't hear that, you just wanna think that you're, he's attacking your speech. Guess what, Danielle Gross, he wasn't attacking your speech, he was saying that as a person, you're a piece of shit. Is that clear enough for you? So Danielle, yeah, she really made me upset when she said that, so that's cute, pardon my language. But that's what he was trying to get a point, that what kind of person does this stuff? Well, Danielle Gross.
She, because she's been in cahoots with Abigail Turner, she's been in cahoots with Abigail Turner, okay? Uh, they went cahoots with the Northern York Democratic Club, okay? And we all saw that in the emails that came out, okay? In order to silence the conservatives and attack the conservative board. Okay, so everything that John Cobb said, he wasn't addressing anybody per se, he was addressing their behaviors. But yeah, what happened was that it was a slap in the face to her, a slap that she needs, okay? It was a reality call, if she has a shred of a conscience, which I doubt, then she felt embarrassed and she felt attacked because she knows that this is exactly what she's doing.
Yeah, based on her response, it's clear that she didn't, she did not get the whole point of anything. Uh, being that she thought they were attacking her speech, no, it's attacking your speech or just saying your actions and your speech. Look, make it look like you're a very hateful person.
She is a hateful person, I'm saying, I've been to these meetings.
Um, do you wanna, do you wanna to do the Christie clip now, do we wanna do that?
Yes, let's do that.
Um, cause we know that it's not gonna be, uh, we know that we're gonna potentially run into problems with it, so we're gonna, we'll do it now here towards the end. So at least that way I don't have to do too much editing. Uh, did we wanna do any other clips? I'm gonna show your clip at the end, sorry, Mariana, but we are gonna see Mariana before we close out this episode. Because uh, she was throwing fireballs and we're gonna have, we're gonna re-show that again.
Let's do Christie, cause I want, the parents need to understand.
Yeah, she went first and you were kind of the follow-up act, and I think that was a great, I think you guys did a great one, two, like punch kind of a thing on that. The way she kind of set everything up and then you kind of, you know, knocked it all down. So yeah, let's take a look at Christie's clip first, and then we'll chat for a few minutes, and then we'll uh, watch Mariana, so here's Christie's clip, it is about four and a half minutes.
Christie Harmon.
Well, good evening, guys, how are we doing? Well, first of all, Kelly, before I get into um, the books that I brought, I would like to thank you for everything you've done. And um, just like John Cobb said, I sit here tonight and uh, we wonder why our schools have the problems we do. With the bullying, the drugs, and I look at the parents, can't even stand, Abby and I don't see eye to eye. I stood, a lot of people and I stood, so.
I stood, oh, you stood for me, I get it, I apologize.
Yeah, so I just wanted to say thank you, and, and I wanted to give you some advice, I would run as fast as you could. Because the parents, if they don't change at home, nothing's gonna change. So, and uh, we saw a good example of that, we have shirts on that say, bye Felicia, how old are we?
I'm sixty-one, so I don't know the rest of everybody.
But, so I would like to do some reading for you guys tonight, and this is called All Boys Aren't Blue. And I have two books, so I'm just gonna kinda hit them up a little bit, okay? He reached his hand out and pulled out my D I C K. He quickly went to giving me head, I just sat back and enjoyed it, as I could tell, he was too. He was also definitely experienced in what he was doing because he went to work quite confidently. He then came up and asked if I wanted to try on him, I said, sure, I began and he said, watch your teeth. I didn't want to let him know I was inexperienced, so I slowed down and took my time and quickly got into a good rhythm. He didn't know I was a virgin and I did my best to act dominant, like my favorite porn star, I was an actor and this was my movie. There was much excitement running through my body, this was much more than losing my virginity. For once, I was consenting to the sexual satisfaction of my body. This moment also confirmed that sex could look how I wanted it to. And then it could be passionate and kind, but mostly importantly fun and satisfying. His body felt great in my mouth, I came up after a while. Uh, no, I don't have to, it actually gets worse, but okay. This is All Boys Aren't Blue, okay, can I move to my next one then? Okay, guys. This is, yeah, and I don't have to read it all, guys. Okay, so this is um, Looking for Alaska, this is in Redland, and this is in Cedar Cliff.
We don't have a challenge on that one, do we?
I don't know, Mariana, she'll be talking about next, okay? Sorry, guys, this is really small, so have you ever gotten a blowjob? I've never, I've never given one, she answered, her little voice dripping with seduction. It was so brazen, I thought I would, I would explode, I never thought I, I never thought I. I never thought I would mean from Alaska hearing that stuff was one thing. But to hear her sweet little Roman voice go so sexy all of a sudden, no, I said, I have never. I have never think, I, I think I want to, I said, and she kissed a little more, and then with me. It was so small, I can hardly see it, okay, let me get back here. The, the, the Brandy Bunch watching Marcia, Marcia, Marcia up to her. Up to her and pulled out her penis, wow, she said, what? She looked up at me but didn't move her face away from my penis, it was weird. What do you mean weird, just big, I guess, I could, I could live without all those kind of statements. And waited, and we were both very still, she did not move a muscle in her body, and I did not move a muscle in mine. I knew at this point something else was supposed to happen, and that just.
Mrs. Spangler, your time is up.
Okay, guys, and that is um, Looking for Alaska. And I just wanted one other comment, those who push porn on our children are always on the wrong side of history, thank you.
It is four minutes, but she was interrupted during her.
Mrs. President.
Thank you, Miss Spangler.
David.
Um, and I also wanna point out, I didn't put that clip in there, I probably should have left it in there, but right after that, that's where David Britton felt the need. Right after Christie was reading this, that's when David Britton felt the need to clarify uh, what someone else was speaking about before Christie. He felt the need to, right after that clip.
Okay, so it seems like we lost the clip, and I think we lost Jonathan here.
Oh, did we lose me? Um, hold on, we're having an issue here, I'm not sure which one of us we lost.
But as you can see, that was Christie. Okay, reading um, All Boys Aren't Blue, and um, the challenge was ignored. Okay, um, it's a disgusting book, uh, committee here voted to our library, parents, we need to do a better job, okay? And demanding that this is removed. We definitely have to do a better job at this. Um, so, getting back to what I was saying, okay? We do have a anonymous, private group that is making these decisions for us. As to what they are going to expose our children to. I see John.
Yes, I'm back, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, good, so yes, that was uh, that was the, as Mariana, I assume you went over that already. But uh, I wanna say uh, real quick uh, that I should have kept it in the clip, but uh, I didn't. Uh, right after that is when David Britton felt the need to clarify something that the person before Christie spoke about. That he, he chose that minute after Christie read that disgusting material. He felt that was the time to clarify a previous person's.
Yes, he was clarifying that Redland is having a musical.
Does that, uh, was that really the moment, though, Mariana? Like, was that, I, in my opinion, that.
No, it wasn't, I felt that it was disrespectful. Yes, I felt it was disrespectful, I felt that he did not give the attention nor gave it the importance that it required. Okay, it was in poor and bad taste, I don't know what he was thinking.
Yeah, I don't know what he was thinking either, that was uh, yeah, I can't believe it, but um. Yeah, I was just astonished, I, I was astonishing to me, after that, I was already beside myself with what Christie was reading. And then, of course, he, I, I just, that totally brought me right back, I was like, really dude, really? So work on your timing a little bit there, David Britton. And that, that is, that stuff is in the school, and look, they didn't even want her reading it, they were trying to shut her, they didn't want her reading that stuff. That's why I think, I think she was a little too accommodating for the board, I mean, she was running out of time, so it's good she did switch to the other book. But I think she should have got into some of the worst stuff that's yet to be in that book, like, that was just the tip of the iceberg. Mariana, did we lose you this time? Mariana, did we lose you this time?
I think we both, I, we lost both of us there for a minute.
Okay, um, so, but anyway, um.
But um, yes, if I was her, I would have continued. Yeah, if I was her, I would have continued your reading, but I do want to stand um Mrs. Cox, you know, it was should um our children be feeling being exposed to all this stuff?
Yeah, absolutely. Uh, that's, yeah, they were uncomfortable. I can't imagine the kids in the, in the library seeing this stuff. So, yeah, absolutely. Um, all right, is there anything else?
They want to expose. Because Mrs. Miss Yeah, let me not say they, Mrs. Cox have been fighting also to remove this and fighting for this library, you know? I'm sorry, I lost you there.
It's okay, continue if you can hear me. Just go ahead.
Okay, so like I was saying, Mrs. Cox has been fighting hard, longing hard for this to be removed. So if this is making adults feel uncomfortable, imagine our children. So why expose our children to this? Because a group of six, uh, uh, of sick, twisted, demented people want this in our school? Because that, you gotta be sick, twisted, demented. And I would, I would even say, you know, demonically possessed to want any child to read this.
Yeah, absolutely. I don't think that that shouldn't be for anybody. Uh, it's barely for adults anyway. So um, is there anything else, Mariana, you want to discuss? Because I'm going to show your clip and then we can uh get ready to close out the episode.
You know, making them understand that this is not okay.
Are you with me? Do we still have you? We are having a few technical issues here on this episode. Uh, we're not sure which one it's coming from. I'm going to play the clip for of Mariana quick and see if we can get her back, make sure we have her back. Um, and then uh we'll, we'll get ready to close out the episode. So this is Mariana. She spoke uh a person or two right after Christie and she's following up with what Christie said.
Mariana Reed.
Mr. Mark, will you give this to Ms. Um Cox, Mrs. Cox? Thank you. Okay, so tonight I stand before you not to entertain fiction, but to confront it. There's a narrative circulating crafted by certain board members that claims that no inappropriate books in our schools were ever challenged. That's false. That's fiction. And it's time we call it for what it is, a deliberate attempt to rewrite history. Mrs. Cox, if you will look at that folder, look at the date and look at the um who I also carving copy to it. I carve and copy these people on purpose so that they say, that nobody could ever say they didn't receive it, okay? In August twenty twenty-five, I personally submitted formal challenges to three books, three, not zero. I started with three intentionally to observe whether the process will be honored or ignored. And what happened? Silence, deflection, and now denial. The very individuals who now claim no challenges were made at the same ones are the same ones who accuse Mrs. Kelly Brent of lacking transparency. The irony is staggering. Let's be clear. There was never a lack of transparency from Mrs. Brent. What there was and still is, is a coordinated effort to undermine her. We saw that tonight. Not just by agenda-driven parents and community members, not just by administrators, but by veteran board members, one of whom is retiring tonight. To Mrs. Brent, job well done. You became a mama bear to the conservative board. You were willing to undertake any attack to protect them. You were targeted because you exposed the darkness. You pull back the curtain on the chicanery, the manipulation and the hidden agendas that have plagued this board and this administration. And when truth threatens power, power retaliates. They didn't silence you. They revealed themselves. You did an incredible job. You stood firm when it would have been easier to fold. You chose transparency over comfort, integrity over popularity and truth over the spin. And for that, the parents and the children of the West Shore School District owe you a debt of gratitude. We thank you, we honor you, and we love you. May God bless your future endeavors. I have a message from one of my sons, from Caleb. He said, thank you. Okay, thank you for that talk that you gave him in civics. He is now a voter and I'm proud to say that he voted the right way. And he said that you are a blessing. To the community, I offer this reminder from Thomas Jefferson. The government you elect is the government you deserve. If you want better, we must make demands better. If we want truth, we must defend it. And if we want accountability, we must show up again and again until the fiction is replaced with facts. In reference to the challenges that I gave Mrs. Um, Mrs. Cox, if she would see the date that was submitted in August, I also carbon copy to avoid people saying that they never received it. I also carbon copy Dawn Kiefer and Sean McCormick. And I have the email from Mr. Gay um acknowledging receipt. To this day, crickets. So Mrs. Brent, you know what? You're a blessing. Uh, they don't know what they lost. God bless.
Thank you.
So that's what uh Mariana had to say. And I think you uh, you were the last speaker there and I think that was the perfect way to close out that meeting too. Uh, it just, they do it alphabetically, right? Is how they do the comments?
Yes, the last speaker was actually Abigail Turner's husband. That was like, oh.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, so um, and we were, we were expecting Arara.
Yeah, um, but the other side came out good, especially you and you and Christie and and John Cobb were were excellent counters to to their speakers. And I think you guys made a bigger impact than than what most of them. And of course, um Sarah was also there uh speaking. Sarah Miller also spoke too. A lot of parents did come out last night to speak, so and it wasn't just for the one side, it was for both sides, so. You know, that was great to see, but it needs to keep happening. It needs to happen more often, especially now with the uh board the way it is.
And you know, Jonathan, one thing I want the parents to respect in the next meeting in December is the restructuring meeting. So this is where they swear in um the pickle. Okay, this is also where they swear in Dankowski, um, who is gonna be Abigail Turner two point O, just warning you guys, okay, um. So I, this is my prediction, now that I know this for a fact because I do not. But what I predict that's gonna happen here is that we're gonna wind up with Brian Geiswhite. Okay, you know, the one that said that um these books are not in the West Shore School District along with Todd Stouts. So I expect him to be the president again. So parents get ready to be yelled at, verbally abused, and escorted out of these meetings when you bring truth. Get ready for that because it's coming, okay? And who, if I, we have to make a guess as to who will be the vice president? I would probably say Cambic, okay? Um, Cambic is a social climber, like I've always said, okay, Mr. Beaker, the Muppet Beaker. Um, I wouldn't know why they will put him because he's effective, he hasn't been effective of anything. But anyway, that's who I would think, okay? That would be the next president and vice president. But the issue here is that, you know, getting back to Brian Geiswhite, remember that his wife used to be the head librarian eh for the West Shore School District. And she was also the one leading the Gay Alliance Club in the West Shore School District. I I've shown you guys this clip uh before, before, you know, uh many a times, um, the proof. And um she's the one as the head librarian that allowed a lot of the smut to come into the school. So it's gonna be um Brian Geiswhite, her husband, okay? And I believe if I'm gonna call it, I want to say maybe Cambic as the vice president. Because I can't see Trump being a good vice president. Dormuff is just too new, okay? Um, it would be wise to put a conservative that that way we have, you know, two different people, okay, representing each party, but I doubt they're gonna do that.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, really, there's the Republican, the Republicans, do they have two people on the board right now? They only have um David Britton and that's a stretch.
We got three. We got Mandy Davis. We got Brenda Cox.
Yeah.
Right, and we got David Britton. So we got three.
Yeah, who is the middle? Brenda Cox.
Brenda Cox.
She's a conservative?
Oh, yeah, she's a, oh, yeah, she's a, uh, she's a super conservative.
Okay, and then um, and then David Britton, who is a some-timer. Sometimes he's conservative and sometimes he's not.
Mm-hmm.
So, but yeah, it's uh, it's not looking good in the West Shore School District, but we are gonna keep following it. Uh, if they thought that's the result of the elections was gonna be like, oh, maybe the Boiling Point Podcast will leave us alone now. Wrong. We're not going anywhere.
It's funny you say that because you know that I um decided to retire from parental advocacy not too long ago. Well, honey, I feel like the godfather. They keep pulling me back in.
Yeah, yeah, um. But you know what? That's what they 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 probably thought they had a, they were gonna have a free ride. But uh we'll, we'll make them make sure that they understand that they do not, that we're gonna still be here, we're still gonna report it, we're still gonna be reaching more people and there is nothing you can do about that. And uh Penn Live and York Dispatch, get ready. Because in a year or two, you're gonna have some serious competition. We're not just gonna be the small-time podcaster. Uh, weaken viewers out of you. You'll be hemorrhaging them soon.
I hope so. I hope because they need to hemorrhage a little bit.
Yeah, we're working on it. We got lots of things, Mariana. There's, there's lots of things that are, that are in the works that were, you know, me and Nick. And then, of course, me and you, we, we always, we're always working on, you know, what's next or what else are we gonna do? So uh, we're not going anywhere. We have lots of plans. Twenty twenty-four is gonna be a uh, a big year for us because we're gonna be doing a lot of, a lot of stuff. And uh, twenty twenty-five was a year of growth and trying to find the balance between doing this local stuff while still being able to to cover some of the national stuff. I believe that I have figured out uh a semi-balance for that. So we are gonna start doing some national stuff. Uh, and we'll still be continuing to do the the local stuff with the school board. And I don't know if I'm gonna get to it next month because like I said, a lot of stuff's happening in the West Shore School District. But we will be starting to cover uh Camp Hill and hopefully Cumberland Valley in early twenty twenty-six also. So we are gonna be expanding the schools and we're gonna be expanding uh our national coverage. Uh, so look for that. We're gonna be having a lot of content in twenty twenty-six.
And you know, for twenty twenty-six, I can say that um we're gonna see a little bit more of those of reality with Casey Reed. And he will be, he will be covering, yeah, he'll still be covering a lot of the local thing like the West Shore. But he's also gonna cover some of the things that are happening nationally that um other people are not covering, they're not talking about and things that should be spoken about.
Yeah, um, and also I have an episode, I have uh, we have two episodes coming up yet, uh, at least two more episodes before our Christmas episode. I'm gonna be doing an episode on the SNAP benefits uh, from the perspective of someone who are of a conservative Christian uh, who actually gets food stamps and does and does need them. And so we're gonna talk about that. Uh, because I think a lot of people missed out on some of the people that actually do need the food stamps to serve as that stopgap and stuff. So we're gonna do that. And then Mariana may be joining me for an episode. We are gonna talk about the York police officers uh that were uh shot and uh killed in the line of duty in uh September, I believe it was, or October. Um, so we're gonna be talking about that as well. Um, and you know, just like we always do, we don't usually cover stories right when they break. You know, we like to let, we get all the facts, we like to get all the stuff out and we like to have all of everything in place before we present it to the viewers. So that's why we're, we've waited so long for the York Police Officers. And in early twenty twenty-six, we might be doing yet another Charlie Kirk episode or at least uh an episode on the events and the fallout and everything that's been happening with that. But again, we're waiting until we have some information and the facts that we, that we're looking for before we proceed with that. So make sure you, you always know the Boiling Point Podcast is gonna come to you with the facts. Uh, you know, we're not gonna bullshit it. We're not gonna sugarcoat it. We're not gonna keep a bunch of stuff out, even when it's not stuff we want to report, we're still gonna do it. And Mariana, thank you for having me on your show and for sharing the show so that we could talk about what was happening with the uh school district because it's uh quite disturbing. And uh we, it needs to be talked about and we'll continue to do that. Oh, yeah, hold on, one more thing before we um before we close all the way out. I don't know if I have the admittance in here. I don't think, doesn't look like you have the visual of the Facebook.
You mean the bribery?
Yeah, but I do want to put out the uh, there's the evidence of the bribery. Oh, wait, I do have it. It's right next to it. Ha ha. Here's the evidence of the bribery. Right here it is in black and white, okay? Here is the admittance of the bribery right here in black and white. And we are going to continue to show this until a district attorney in the area decides to do something. So we're, we're not gonna stop with that either. That's still very much around. So look for us to follow up with that in twenty twenty-six as well. So Mariana, again, thanks for sharing your show so we could talk about this stuff. And uh, you know, we got lots of stuff coming, especially next month. Tune in next month. If you don't think that we're doing an after show on the meeting where they're gonna undo literally everything, I assure you, we will be doing, and we will be doing a follow-up episode after that meeting.
Yes, we will. Yes, we will.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in. Um, Marcus Frederickson plays us, played us in. He's gonna play us out. Make sure you check him out, reverb nation dot com slash Marcus Frederickson. And check out our storefront, bonfire dot com slash store slash the Boiling Point Podcast. And uh pick yourself up some apparel and support the brand. Until next time, this is not the end, only the beginning.